Further notice was posted and filed as required by law states. The board would meet and close session at 7:00 PM in the Pittman High School Media Center. The president shall entertain any objections with supporting reasons to the conduct of this meeting on the grounds that it violates the Open Public Meeting Act. Good evening, and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Long, will you please fall roll?
Yes. Ms. Bolton.
Here.
Mr. Geroespin.
Present.
Mr. Pappalardo.
Here.
This is Poe.
Here.
This is Miller.
Here. All right, that's going to take us to our presentation portion of the evening. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Mickle first.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to call up Megan Mazzola and Fiona James. These two students are representing our school and our district at the state level for All-State Chorus again this year. They have both done this several consecutive years, which is a really great feat. They would get jackets, but they have already buttoned them, so we don't get them multiple jackets. But we do have certificates for them. So, the way All-State Chorus works is, as you can imagine, it's a very competitive level because they're going against students throughout the entire state. They do an audition in April, and they are either chosen for a mixed group, which is all voices, or a treble group, which is sopranos and altos. And this year, Megan and Fiona are representing in the treble group. They have a few more rehearsals, and then their concert is the end of February. And, no, two concerts end of February, right? Excellent, all right. So, they will be performing in Atlantic City and also at NJ PAC in Newark. So, they will be representing our school. We're very proud of their musicianship, their well-roundedness, their dedication, and we know that they will do as well. So, this is presented to Megan Mazzola for being accepted into the New Jersey All-State Chorus for a third consecutive year. And this is presented to Fiona James for being accepted into the New Jersey All-State Chorus for a second consecutive year.
And now, I'm going to invite Dr. Lombardo up. Is that accurate? Yes? Okay. Just checking through.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to acknowledge some of our junior or senior high students each year. It's a time for us to revel in all the amazing things that they do. And when Ms. Stewart and I talked about who we would like to recognize this year, it's always, you're torn because we have so many amazing kids in the junior, senior high. But this year, what we would like to do is recognize some of our choir singers that are also included in sports. So, every single student that you're going to see singing up here tonight is also involved in a sport, multiple activities, and they also do civic duties on a regular basis. So, I would like to introduce them individually, and as they come up, Mrs. Mickle, where would you like for them to stand? Right in the front? So, I would like to start with Anthony Capello.
And if I could, I'm not going to say something about everyone, but Anthony just had a pin in the wrestling match tonight.
Can I have you kind of slide them on this side here so that we can have the board members see this?
Thank you. Mrs. Mickle, it's all perks. All right. So, they did not know they were getting awards. They were tricked into learning. We sang this song last year, so they didn't have to totally learn a new song. But, they were told that they were performing, and surprised you're being recognized as well. So, here we go.
If I could invite Mrs. Stewart up, please.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to do our staff spotlight, and that's Jeff Flood. So, Jeff, if you want to come up and stand next to me. So, I think, for us, we have so many people that play such a vital role in our kid's day who are not classroom teachers, services, maintenance, custodial. And so, when Dr. Lombardo and I talked about staff spotlight, I think it's a funny story of how this story came about, so I'll tell you a little bit about that. We have our admin meeting, and I said, "I think we're going to recognize Jeff Flood. What do you guys think?" And all the other principals were jealous. So, I said, "Well, does anyone have anything they want to share?" And it turned out that during our Governor's Educator of the Year process, so many teachers and staff members had actually nominated him for the Educational Services Professional. And we know that maintenance and custodial are not eligible to be recognized in that way, but we have a small stack of nominations for Mr. Flood. And so, as I read through these to think about what I wanted to share tonight, I thought a little bit about what I know about Jeff. And for those of you who don't know him, my favorite thing about him is that he's a fantastic storyteller. He tells a great story. And so, he's an avid hunter and fisherman, so we talk about everything from, recently we've been on a coyote kick, which has me nervous because I do own animals. But, he's also the proud father of three kids, and I think you're up to five grandkids.
Five grandkids.
Am I right? So, five grandchildren, so I get to hear all those stories as well. And that kind of is what stuck out to me about his nominations, is that he looks at our kids. He's a great dad and awesome Papa. And he looks at all of our kids as if they were his own. And I find people who do the best work are always the ones that are connected to their purpose. And Jeff is someone who, he looks at every student as someone who, how can he help them? How can he make sure that they get through their day, that they have what they need? And that is what every single one of these papers says. So, I'm going to read a couple things, a couple highlights, if you don't mind. I'm surprised he came. That you showed up. And also, I want to say that the highlight of my night is going to be to meet these people I've been hearing stories about for 10 years, and everyone is sick, so I don't even get a grandkid's eye right now. I even brought my glasses, so. "Mr. Flood consistently goes above and beyond to make our facilities accessible to all staff and students. As an educator, we work diligently to promote access to curriculum for all students through accommodations, modifications, teaching strategies. Mr. Flood promotes access by maintaining and modifying our facilities and equipment to meet the unique needs of students and staff. He has a heart for making things easier for students and staff with disabilities and has personally toured the schools with families, teaching staff, and parents to address needs such as bathroom accessibility, chair and table height, furniture needs for individual students, accommodations such as lowering hand dryers, finding appropriate furniture. He is always willing to brainstorm options when students are having difficulty getting into particular areas of schools. He is always a resource." The next staff member said very similar things, had an injury, and he gave his elevator key to them right on the spot while he made another one, just so they could get to where they needed to go. A great attitude, great work ethic, easy to approach, friendly and respectful, so friendly with our three to six-year-olds. Jeff goes above and beyond on a daily basis, always willing to help. He's a problem solver, huge asset to our district. He deserves to be recognized. And here we are.
If we could invite Mr. Flood and all of the students that were honored this evening to come up and stand in front of the Board of Ed. We'd like to take a couple pictures. Why?
The board doesn't want.
Here, you want to take them then?
Yeah, I'll take them. Great.
I'll send them to.
Photographer.
Okay, that seems better. Yep, okay.
That's my little brother.
Do I know how to do this? Yeah.
No, you guys have to stand up here in front of us. I'm sorry.
You see? We can come around.
Can you see us? Do you want us to come around?
I don't really, either.
You're young, you guys have good knees.
One last round of applause for all of our. We're going to go ahead and take about a five-minute recess so we can congratulate those students and staff that were honored this evening, and then we'll resume the regular meeting. When we get started, this is going to bring us to our first public comment. The Pittman Public School District recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. This is the first of two public comments we will have tonight. The first public hearing is on agenda items only. This is a public comment and not a dialogue between the board and the public. You will have three minutes to speak, and it is your opportunity to comment or ask questions. In accordance with Board Policy Number 0167, we ask that you state your name, municipality, residence, and group affiliation available. To be recognized to speak, please stand at the podium located to my right and speak clearly into the microphone, or just clearly so that the folks at home hear you. I don't see a microphone today. Okay, seeing no one, it's going to take us to correspondence. Mr. Long, do we have any correspondence?
Are we supposed to know that?
We do not.
We do not.
That would be no.
That is intentional.
All right, meeting minutes. I will now move to acceptance motion for the minutes of Pittman Board of Education as held on the dates below are approved, whispered, and reading dispensable. May I have a second?
Second, Pappalardo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Mr. Long, I abstain from the executive session meeting minutes, please.
From the eighteenth.
From the eighteenth, yes, please. So, to take us to our presence report, Dr. Preston, actually, can I? I'm going to punt over to you to go to the superintendent's report, and then I'll circle back, because I think you're going to cover.
Absolutely. Some things.
Yeah. So, that way we, yep.
Doing some things in tandem. Thanks for coming out on this freezing cold night. It's so cold that it's even, I don't know, Joe, how many people we have online? Four? Well, I was going to say, thanks for, the four people that came out, it's hard to even, like, get out of your warm covers to go online to watch something. Obviously, it's cold, but there's a lot percolating, a lot of things on the horizon, as you may be aware. Next Tuesday is our school district bond referendum vote. I'll be sending correspondence out to that to remind residents that our referendum takes place next Tuesday. I also want to point out that next Monday night, you may have seen press releases, it's kind of filtering out. We're actually hosting a countywide roundtable right here in the High School Media Center. We have various Boards of Education, Board Presidents coming. I think we titled it "A Fair Funding Roundtable for Gloucester County Education Leaders." We have probably, I don't know, 50 people at this point?
Yeah.
Fifty, fifty-five people. I had the privilege of speaking last Tuesday with Ms. Miller up in Trenton to the New Jersey Department of Education School Funding Hearing Panel, where they heard from many different districts their plight on the funding formula, its issues, some practical solutions. Over 100 people spoke at that. And so, you know, we felt it was, and I want to commend Ms. Miller for putting this effort together to say, "Hey, there are some solutions here, some practicable things. We've been working with the county business officials who are trying to hear us out. But here, we're really looking at equalization values versus local fair share, how that's changed." So, that's another big event next Monday here in the Media Center on the eve of the referendum. So, I did want to point those out, and I know you'll probably kind of speak a little bit more to those things, and I know you can speak very eloquently to those as well. The, one other thing I did want to discuss before getting into some just shout-outs that I want to give. some, some just shout outs that I want to give, I do have to by statute present the HIBS semi-annual report. Total, district total HIBs reported from July first to December thirty-first were eight total. Confirmed HIBs were four. So reported HIBs, eight, total four. I want to talk about some of the things, and Mr. Cathabean is not here tonight, he's our affirmative action slash HIB officer. He's been doing some really innovative things, meeting with team. Mr. Long came out in September to speak with our group. And as you know, Mr. Cathabean and I were new here. And one of the things, Mr. Long and we all kind of remarked when we met the staff, the existing HIB staff, is that they're very well trained. They know the law very well. The law is difficult if you read it. Most of the conversations I have with parents, when it gets to my level is, you know, I don't like this necessarily either, either, every single aspect of it. But it exists, and this does not, this is not to criminalize children. It's, it's there to protect children. And, and so we constantly find ourselves explaining that. And Mr. Long did a nice job kind of equipping our staff with those conversations, to have those conversations. Principals do a great job here as well. So I want to commend them. Some other things we, we've been doing, we shifted school safety team meetings from the district level to the school level so that they have more ownership. They can, obviously, they can contact us for, for any support. But we have a range of supportive interventions, including counseling, differentiated monitoring by staff, scheduling and placement changes. I won't read all of these. One of the things that we often say to parents is, it's, it's bullying, right? The idea is harassment, intimidation, and bullying. How do you diminish that? How do you, how do you take that down? It's not, it's not a one, one size fits all approach. Sometimes we ask parents, students, would mediation be something you're interested in? Would, would that work? It's, it's, it's more of an art than it is a science. But some, some of the disciplinary measures and some, some of the things we do are including parental notification, parental conferences, detentions, out of school suspensions, certainly mediation, loss of privileges as far as the discipline goes. But we try to make it a restorative approach as well. And hey, how can we get this behavior to stop? How can we teach you? How can we make this a learning experience? And so that's kind of what we're doing. School safety teams, they met in the fall by building. They meet two to four times a year. Topics discussed included preparing HIB grades, self-assessment, district character, education traits, SEL initiatives. Hats off to our counseling team. They put together quite a bit district-wide, including Panther, Panther positives, recognizing good character and kindness in buildings. You see our recognitions the board do. They, they help us in this effort, which we really appreciate. Our student council is, is active in, in positive, in positive things, you know, all the time. Ms. Nichols is here, and señorita, I should say, does a great job with all of that. Red Ribbon Week activities, Week of Respect activities in October, class meetings, which we, we discuss HIB awareness, Google Classroom for SEL activities, Diversity Celebration Week activities are planned district-wide, SEL positive posters, bulletin boards in all buildings, and Paul's Pledge, Reboot, Nurtured Heart, et cetera. So these are some of the things that are happening, taking place in our schools to make it a safe place for everybody. So that's, I think I fulfilled Mr. Long my statutory obligation.
That's not the issue.
Thank you. I do want to give a couple shout outs, too. I don't know if you've seen on Facebook and social media, we have music, we had music students here tonight, but special shout out to Mr. Varesbi. I just kind of wrote it, jotted a couple notes so I wouldn't forget anybody. But I wanted to congratulate four particular students who were, who auditioned and were subsequently selected for Olympic Honors Band. This is Liam Vialli. He earned a spot on trombone. Mia Gladney, Kelsey Patrick, and Noah Zwack were represented on clarinet. Special recognition to Noah, who has now achieved this honor for the third consecutive year. And one round of applause for Mia, Kelsey, and Liam on making ensemble for the first time. Really want to shout out Mr. Varesbi as well. One of the, one of the teachers the board talked, talked to me about even during interviews was we have a great band and instrumental music teacher in Mr. Varesbi. And I can confirm, you know, your suspicions. He's a very good teacher. I know we didn't rice him, but this is a good thing. He's, he's great. And so our incredible, he's just, he does a great job with music theory, music tech, all of these things. Marching band, we saw it at Fourth of July. So I just want to thank him for his dedication. You know, his, you know, his, it's, it's allowed our students to really prosper in that program. And so I really want to thank Mr. Varesbi, certainly Ms. Mickel as well. They, they work as a team. I also, I'm not sure if you saw, I know, actually, Mr. Varesbi put this post together. We put it out at the district level. Ms. Donnelly, who many of you know in the, in the audience and certainly board members, there was a little, she was, she was nominated for what's called a Life Changer of the Year Award, which is, it's a national honor. It's quite an honor. But she, I just kind of want to read about, a little bit about it. I told her today, I stopped in the hallway, I said, I know you're probably not going to like that I do this, but I'm going to, I'm going to shout you out at the board meeting. So Irene Donnelly, a social studies teacher at Pittman Junior High School in Pittman, was nominated for the prestigious Life Changer of the Year Award, a national program recognizing educators who make a significant difference in their students' lives through excellence, leadership, and community impact. With a versatile career as a media specialist, technology instructor, and most recently a teacher, she holds advanced degrees in library science, educational leadership. She was telling me about that today, and she said, really, I just, my heart's in teaching. And, you know, I like to think of myself, you know, and we were talking about this, as, you know, as a superintendent, yeah, we're dealing with different things and certainly different aspects of an educational ecosystem. But just to talk to a teacher like that really kind of, you know, rekindles the fact that we're all educators. And we have educators on the board, and always to maintain the heart of a teacher in everything we do, even as administrators. And, and she certainly kind of brings that, that, that both levity and seriousness and demeanor to, to, you know, even my conversations. She always stops me every time I go in. She's excellent. She is known for initiatives like Poems on Parade, Battle of the Books. She has transformed learning by fostering creativity and critical thinking. Her engaging immersive teaching style captivates students while her resilience and empathy shaped by personal loss enable her to meet their social, emotional, and academic needs. A Hall of Fame athlete and dedicated community volunteer, Mrs. Donnelly's impact reaches far beyond the classroom, embodying the qualities celebrated by the Life Changer of the Year Program. So shout out to Ms. Donnelly if she's watching or she sees this on record. I wanted to shout her out. Thanks for listening to all that. And that concludes my report.
Both of the staff members you mentioned are really incredible. And I think Mrs. Donnelly definitely embodies that award. I, we have two students. What's her catchphrase? What does Mrs. Donnelly always say?
Is it better than?
Yeah. You're right, we have four students. I was only looking up there. That's great. No, that's great. Leave it better than you found it. And she does. So whether it be like Cooking Club, she's just, she's so in tune to the kids' needs. And she's always working to kind of make sure that she's reaching them on all different kinds of levels. Incredible. All right. That's going to take us to the presence report, and then I'll bump over to you guys. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a new NJ SBA field service rep who is covering our district. They've actually not permanently assigned one. It was an item that I had followed up a couple times with the NJ SBA because he's not received any guidance. Terry Lewis retired at the, over the holiday break. But I'm not quite sure why we don't have someone permanently assigned. I don't know that there's been like a hiring process. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure what's going on. But we are, we do have that as coverage. And I will forward her email in case you have any NJ SBA related questions. That would be the person we would direct them to. The other item I just wanted to put on the board's kind of radar, and this is something that I'm continuing to follow up on, is the NJ SBA School Finance Committee. I was appointed to that last year. We met once, and we've not reconvened. So I think that that is a huge opportunity, really a missed opportunity for the individuals that were appointed to that board. And it's something that I'm just going to kind of keep hammering away at until we get that scheduled. And there's an opportunity for us to use that as a additional venue to advocate for some of the things we know we need to be advocating for. I attended the county leadership meeting with Ray Penny. That's always really great. He does such a nice job, including all of the president's vice presidents and some of the planning, of the planning discussions. So it's been nice to kind of join into those. The DOE hearing that Dr. Preston spoke about on Tuesday was in Trenton. I provided testimony prior to the holidays. Dr. Preston was able to, and Mr. Miles were able to provide testimony on the fourteenth in Trenton. And Rebecca and I were able to attend the hearing at Camden County College, where we were able to hear from some more local districts. And so we could hear some of their concerns. It really is some of the same sentiments that we articulated in our communication that's gone out about the Funding Formula Meeting being held on the twenty-seventh. And we also spoke to Senator Burgecelli's office regarding the upcoming meeting on the twenty-seventh. We did invite LD three, four, and five because they're all represented in Gloucester County. We invited the educational liaison from the county commissioner's office, all boards of education members, superintendents, and business administrators to the meeting on the twenty-seventh. We've had very, I think, robust attendance. As somebody who's been talking about this for quite a while, and it's usually like just a glazed over blank look that I get, I was excited that people opened the email and read it and wanted to kind of come out. But one of the most recent kind of stats that I was kind of looking at, you know, one of the original intentions of the School Funding Reform Act in two thousand and eight was to lower property taxes. And that was the same kind of common theme that was the tagline for S two as well, in fully funding the formula, the state meeting that obligation. And so what I thought was so interesting is when I looked at Gloucester County and I looked at our local fair share, so what the state has estimated since the induction, actually, it's about a year late because these are the fiscal year ten state aid notices. So they've increased local property tax burdens for school districts by eighty-one percent since the induction, for school taxes, to be very clear, separate from your municipal taxes, and local property taxes for homeowners in Gloucester County. And then in turn, that allows them to give us less equalization aid. So that's likely why we were the fifth biggest loser in equalization aid in just one year from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And then when we look at it, some, one of the other things that's very interesting is the state comes in and they say, this is your expectation in terms of your municipal tax burden. But districts aren't legally obligated to reach that threshold. So they can fall very short. So there's some municipalities that have chosen to stay flat, for example. And if they're in a regular operating district like ourselves, that would just leave you without adequate resources to provide for your kids. In some of the, what were formerly called Abbott districts or SDA districts, like they've maintained a flat tax base, even though their local fair share, because they've had wealth in their community, go up hundreds of millions of dollars, and they've not raised it. Whereas we pretty much almost hit our local fair share. So there's been districts in Gloucester County that have seen nearly double local fair share increase, expectations by the state. So those are just some of the numbers that we keep drilling down and looking for disparity. We know that it greatly impacts the South Jersey region. I don't think that that's a surprise. I know that there's other districts that have kind of sounded the alarm. But our intention is to get everyone in Gloucester County that's interested around the table and see how we can move forward in advocating as a district. So while I have everyone here, let's, I just wanted to get a head count for the twenty-seventh. I know some folks have other engagements. Dave, you'll be there, right, on the twenty-seventh? Natalie, Stacy, Rebecca, you two are otherwise engaged? Or you'll be there?
I'll be there.
You'll be there? Great. Okay. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up at reorg, and it kind of slipped my radar, has anybody had any issues with their computers in terms of needing them to be updated? I think mine probably like is smoking at some points when I find a new data sheet. I'm real excited. It's color coded. But I just wanted to check in and make sure that they didn't need to go back to tech and everybody's good.
Nope, just me. Got it.
All right. I suspected that much. I almost made this an email because I thought that was going to be.
We don't have like.
Like my own computer and the other. Oh, look, I'm only on one tonight, though. It's pretty, pretty cut and dry.
I mean, I feel like I only use this for board stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I bring it out once.
Yeah, I usually need like spreadsheet and then the narrative and I don't know, the whole thing. All right. I think that's it for our presence reports. I'm going to go ahead and.
Can I add something else?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
That I meant to mention at reorg, but I forgot.
Sure.
Because it's a new year, don't forget, there's another round of training. So whatever year you are on.
Oh, yeah, that's right, governance.
I've already signed up for governance for.
Dave, you're usually first out of the gate.
There you go.
Mr. Grossman is like.
Do we have another one?
Yes, you have another one.
Yeah.
There's year one, year two, year three, and year four.
And then after year four, it's every five years, I think.
So.
That's a great reminder.
Go on the NJ SBA website, and they will tell you all the times it's being offered.
Right. And you can do the self-paced course.
Can we register ourselves? Or is that something that, don't we always have to?
Right.
I don't know why. I think it's stupid, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
It's just another burden for him.
Did the stipulation change, too, that you don't, how many days do you have?
The sixty days was, I think, just for first year board members.
First year, okay.
That's my understanding. I was reading through some ethics decisions recently, and they had like people that weren't in compliance. And it was very interesting how long that leash is.
Okay, so the more of the story is sooner rather than later.
It's red on it, right.
Check it out.
Yes.
See what you can make work with your schedule so that you can check it off your list.
I, I think that Dave has been the first one done every year that you've been on the board.
No, two years ago, no, two years ago, I got threatened. I got an email like December seventeenth.
Yeah.
You got to take governance two before the, and like.
Oh, yeah, you did it back to back.
Twenty-seventh. And if you don't take it, you're off the board. I'm like, oh, this will be available that night.
We'll never do that again.
No.
Okay.
That's all I got, sorry.
State Bar Association, not to be confused with.
Yes, I had to book it.
Tried to log in fifteen times.
To the State Bar Association.
Reset my password. I'm like, what is going on?
I'll give you my login.
Yeah.
I love it.
The Bar Association. Love it. All right. That's going to bring us to our student rep reports, right? All right.
Thank you. The Pittman Elementary School and Memorial School do not have a report for this month, but they will return next month with a report.
So over at the junior and senior high, students have stepped back to school for the new year. The second marking period concludes in two days, and senior high students are preparing for midterm exams, which start on Monday, January twenty-seventh. On January eighth, the National Art Honor Society and TRI-M held their induction ceremony. Congratulations to everyone who was inducted. The National Honor Society has begun tutoring students. Anyone is welcome to stop by the media center on Wednesdays after school to get homework help. The senior boys have begun signing up for Mr. Pittman, and the student council has begun planning Academic Spirit Week, Academic Bowl, and the staff luncheon. I will update with themes and other events as the time gets closer.
Okay, thank you. What's the social media project this month?
We're going to do a focus on the activities that include service around the school since it was MLK Day of Service.
That's great.
To kind of tie into that.
Okay.
So things like NHS, key clubs, student council, all the ways the school can give back to the community.
I think that's wonderful. Lots of opportunities, too. I feel like sometimes students struggle to kind of find some of those opportunities. So it would be great for them to learn about what other, what their peers are doing so they can find out. That's great. All right. That's going to bring us to our Finance and Facilities Committee. And I'm going to turn it over to our chairman. Mr. Grossman, did you see the notes, by the way?
I did.
Okay.
Before I get to my part, I just got to say, I read a lot of leadership books for, for work, my work. And genuine leadership is a commendable virtue. And I think this board is very grateful, and this district's very grateful to have April Miller and Dr. Robert Preston that go to lengths they do to go to Trenton and April and that Funding Formula. So it's, it's commendable. And thank you.
Yeah.
I'm usually the guy that goes for the punchline, but I had to, anyway.
Right.
Make sure the check clears.
Can you say just kidding, please?
Just kidding. The Finance and Facilities Committee met via Zoom on Thursday, January sixteenth at four p.m. In attendance besides myself were Board President April Miller, Superintendent Dr. Preston, Board Secretary and District Business Administrator Rob Miles, and my esteemed colleague Rebecca Hibiayona. The meeting lasted one hour, and we convened at five p.m. Items discussed were the Panther Club, whose funds are represented in our enterprise account, is presently showing a profit where it needs to be a nonprofit organization. But not to worry, so long as those funds are reinvested from the plus side of the ledger back into the school for something that was shared use between the school and Panther Club, we're all good. So example, like a floor, gymnasium floor, equipment, anything like that. So we're all good there. Nothing to worry about. Not to worry, eh, I lost my spot. We will have more on that at a later date. A point of recognition for past interim superintendent and former BA, Carissa Rose. This month, Pittman School District passed our food audit with no fiscal findings. We will be going out for bids for the cost of the relocation of the district offices to Wall School. We also discussed our district school bus that is sitting unused at the Hart Bus, and we agreed. And it's on the agenda tonight for the vote to explore avenues to sell the bus. As it is, still has value, and it's just depreciating every day. It sits there unused. And we're told by the yard foreman at the Hart that it's a good bus and has good value right now. So we're going to explore that avenue. And thank you. And that concludes my report for this evening. With that, I'll make a motion to approve items one through fourteen on the agenda for approval.
You have a second?
I'm going to be hanging. Come on, Natalie.
I'm not in your team.
I'm in your committee.
I thought I'd be the only. I might want to make an additional note on. Item number thirteen, as it pertains to the bus, this is something we've kind of kicked back and forth quite a bit. We have transportation contracts for pupils and out of district placements that can be pretty exorbitant. But the, the difficulty is retaining bus drivers. So that's something that we kind of explore. that we kind of explored to the end of its length and we weren't able to kind of make that work because ideally we would keep any resources that we have in district to help offset some of those costs, but it's just not a feasible opportunity for us, no matter how many times we've explored it. So this will, this will be helpful. Any further discussion on any of the other items? All right, seeing none, Mr. Long, please call the vote.
Ms. Bolton?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Ms. Higby Iona?
Yes.
Ms. Papalardo?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, that's going to bring us to curriculum instruction, I will turn it over to our chairwoman, Mrs. Bolton.
All right, Curriculum Instruction Committee met on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at four forty. The meeting lasted a little less than an hour and in attendance were Dr. Preston, Mr. Caltabiano, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Poe, and myself. It was a fairly light month for us in the curriculum and instruction committee. We just discussed some things like on the agenda, Stacy DeCaro will be covering an FMLA leave, so she'll temporarily be our communications coordinator. We also talked about joining the two stipends together for the musical and I'm looking at the, combining the musical director and assistant musical director position into one position there. And then last, we discussed class ranking and how it's determined at the high school as well as comparing it to the rest of the county. The policy committee, right now, we're doing a little more research before we decide on any changes that we're going to make there. So the policy committee will eventually have to change some policies on that. So for now, we're going to do a little more research before any changes are made with that. And that was it. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve items two through sixteen as written.
Okay, have a second. All right, any discussion about any of those items? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Long, please call the vote.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell? And Ms. Farrell, sorry. Ms. Higby Iona?
Yes.
Ms. Papalardo?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that's going to take us to communication and policy and I will turn it over to our committee chairwoman, Mrs. Higby Iona.
The Communication Policy Committee met on January fifteenth at five thirty PM. In attendance were Ms. Papalardo, Ms. Farrell, myself, Dr. Preston, and Mr. Caltabiano. We have no action items this month, but as Mrs. Bolton mentioned, we discussed possible revisions to the several district policies that affect how we calculate GPA and class rank. We need to gather more information and Dr. Preston is not prepared to make any recommendations at this time.
Okay. All right, so nothing to vote on in that section, that's going to take us to our second public hearing. If you'd like to be recognized to speak, please come to the podium located to my right, say your name, municipality, residence, and group affiliation, and limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, any old business? Any new business? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Papalardo.
You have a second?
Second, Bolton.
All in favor? Aye. The next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for February nineteenth at seven PM in the Pittman High School Media Center. All right.